Or do you mind? Ooh.
Yes.
Hot, hot mic. Well, good afternoon and welcome to the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. Before we begin today, I want to just begin with just a couple of housekeeping items for us. First, if you are wishing to address the planning commission, we have, we ask, and you are not an applicant, we do ask that you complete one of the forms that we have outside on the desk. We will only be calling on, when we get to cases, we'll only be calling on those people from the audience who have successfully completed that form. We do ask that you please limit your comments to five minutes. We do reserve the right to prevent you from making any repetitive comments. And as always, we just ask that we, you follow the golden rule and be respectful of each other, respectful of us, and respectful of the process. So with that being said, we will begin with the receipt of the minutes from the September 14th, 2023 meeting. If anybody wants to jump in and make that motion.
I move, wait. Accept the minutes from the previous meeting.
Commissioner Powers moves that we receive the minutes from the September 14th, 2023 meeting. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Privet whenever we get that up and running.
That's my bad, because I'm not signed in yet.
Okay.
So you see Commissioner Claire making that motion.
Right, we're all like, we forgot. If he's watching, at least he knows how appreciated he is, right from the very beginning.
Yes.
Hot mics today. Do we want to just go ahead and have someone else make the motion?
Let's do it.
Yeah. So Commissioner Gauvins moved to receive the minutes. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes.
I vote aye.
And Commissioner Powers does vote aye. And the motion passes. We're now in line for continuance requests. We'll begin with uncontested requests.
Item 12, KCE 1107, deferred to October 12th. Item 14, KC 7587, deferred to October 12th. Item 15, KCE 1105, deferred to October 12th. Item 16, KC 7581, deferred to October 12th. Item 17, KC PC 10901, deferred to October 26th. Item 18, SPOD 1509, deferred to October 26th. Item 19, KC 7527, deferred to December 14th. Item 20, KC PC 10879, withdraw, has been withdrawn, and item 21, KC 7524, has also been withdrawn.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on any of those items? All right, then we're in line for a motion to approve the uncontested requests as read.
Move to approve uncontested requests as read.
Commissioner Gauvins moved to approve the uncontested requests. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're in line for new requests.
Item 13, KCE 1109, request to defer to October 26th.
Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on that item? All right, then we're in line for a motion to approve the new continuance requests.
I'll move to approve new continuous requests.
Commissioner Gauvins moves to approve the new continuance requests. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're in line for the consent docket.
Item 1 on the consent docket is KC 7585, a final plat and a replat of Fairfax Edition lots 1 through 5, inclusive, block 11, located south of northeast 30th Street and east of North Kelly Avenue. Item 2 is KC 7586, a final plat of Cornerstone Creek, Section 2, located south of northwest 150th Street and west of North Morgan Road. Item 3, KC 7589, final plat of Barline Industrial Park, Phase 2, located north of Northwest Expressway and west of North Morgan, Morgan Road. Item 4, KC 7590, final plat, also a replat of portions of Tuscany Lakes, Phase 2, located west of North County Line Road and north of northwest 122nd Street. And finally, item 5, case DA 7PH, application for consideration of a lot split deed approval on property located at 11396 West Memorial Road, and generally located east of North Mustang Road and south of West Memorial Road.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on any of those items? Seeing none, I think we're ready for the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of the consent docket as read.
Commissioner Gauvins moves to approve the consent docket as read. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're in line for items requiring separate vote, and we'll begin with item 6.
Item 6 is KC 7588, preliminary plat of Northwest Passage Business Park, located east of North Council Road and north of West Wilshire Boulevard.
Good afternoon, Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Sarah Road, on behalf of the applicant. This is a preliminary plat for a replat of an existing lot and block within a Silver Cross Business Park, which was a plat that was filed back in 2019, hit subdividing a 4.62 acre site into 19 individual industrial lots. We agree with the TEs. We'd be happy to answer any questions, but ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners?
One thing, Mr. Chairman, I noticed on page 2, the second paragraph, I think that it says access to this development is taken from 122nd Street.
Yeah, I've already talked to.
Okay.
It was just.
Typo.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we need, I guess, do we need to fix that before we approve it? That typo? Yeah? Okay. Other questions, commissioners? Then I think we're ready for a motion.
Move to recommend, move to approve C 7588.
The motion is to approve C 7588, including the technical evaluations. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you. We're in line for item 7.
Item 7 is CE 1110, application by Rogers Oil to close 125 feet of the north-south alley, west of South Shields Boulevard and north of southeast 43rd Street.
Thank you.
In block 52 of Shields, South Oklahoma City Edition.
Thank you. I started to cut you off early, sorry.
Thank you. Purvy Patel Wallace Design Collective, the address is 410 North Walnut. We are representing the owner on this application. They're requesting an alley closure as they own the lots that front Shields Boulevard as well as the lots west of the alley on southeast 43rd Street. The intention is to develop that, those lots as one parcel with the building fronting along Shields Boulevard and parking provided on the lot that's on southeast 43rd Street. There are some utilities that run through the alley. We are open to keeping that utility easement through there, just asking for the alley to be closed. Are there available questions?
Thank you. This is in Ward 4, Commissioner Privet.
Yeah, yeah, this one's pretty simple. Unpaved, unused alley, nothing next to it, so I have no issues with it.
Same. Other questions, commissioners?
This may seem like a silly question, but why aren't you closing the whole alley?
We don't own the property to the north of it. We did communicate with the property owner to the north. They do intend to close the alley on the portion that they own as well, but they're just not ready to move forward with that application at this time.
I see, okay.
That's a good question. Other questions, commissioners? I think we're ready.
I'll move to recommend approval of KCE 110, 1110.
Commissioner Privet moves to recommend approval of CE 1110 to City Council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you. We're in line for item 8.
Item 8 is PUD 1966, application to rezone 6602 South Anderson Road from AA and AE2 to PUD 1966.
Thank you.
How you doing today? Ross Morris with Morris Engineering, representing the applicant who is here. Since our last meeting, we have met with the adjacent homeowners, the ones that cared to come to the meeting, and, well, I think Mr. Privet was there. And I think we've got, I think we've got our protest down to next to nothing. We agree with the TE and the, in the staff's report, so we just ask for your support today.
Before I call on Commissioner Privet, were there any changes that were made after the conversation with the neighbors? To the application?
No, we had added in there about putting wire along the fencing along the north and facing the lights away, so, and I think that was the bulk of it.
Commissioner Privet?
Yeah, and my only question was that the fence was going to be site-proof, and that is the case, with slats and chain link. If anybody's here, love to hear from them.
No one signed up.
Okay, that's good. I think that's.
It's a good sign. We had a lot of people here.
Yeah. As Mr. Morris said, not a whole lot showed up, so I'd say that's another good sign, because case before, we had, on that same plot of land, had quite a bit show up, and understandably so, it was, it wouldn't right for the area. But, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Can I just, can I ask you to explain, on the site plan that's been submitted, what are these squares?
It's going to be covered RV parking, so they're going to be covering.
Canopies.
And then underneath, there'll be the parking in there, obviously.
Okay, so they're open air, no wall?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. I'm sorry.
Okay, that makes sense now. I wanted to clarify.
Makes sense. There are no further questions from commissioners. Commissioner Privet?
Yep. I will move to recommend approval of PUD 1966.
Commissioner Privet moves to recommend approval of PUD 1966 to City Council, including the technical evaluation.
Yes, obviously.
That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you. You too. We're in line for item 9.
This is SPOD 1558, application to rezone 5605 Harrah Road from C1 and AA.
Is there an applicant present?
Hello, I'm Steve Landies with Landies Engineering, actually representing Mr. Schwab's, who's at the back. Landies Engineering, 903 East 35th Street, Shawnee, Oklahoma. What Mr. Schwab's planning on doing is basically building a facility that's really for sports recreational facility out for kids, that area, baseball batting cages, weightlifting, things for recreational for kids. And then we have that little strange situation with Lucille right there, that we looked at trying to turn that into a road, and on the north side, because there's really not much space, putting a little ice house or something in over there to use that parcel. One of the things that we may be back here pretty quickly is to actually vacate Lucille. But right now, we looked at saying we'd only just actually use Lucille, build that first, what, 75 or 100 feet of the road right through there, and be able to get access to both. I think the city was fine with that approach. Can't go much further than that, because actually, from that location, it drops off pretty quickly into that right-of-way. You see a little drainage channel that comes down through there, and of course, those are two-foot planometric, so it falls into ravine more than anything else. In fact, it's to the point to where that section right there is still all that's open, on further to the west, that right-of-way's already been vacated, and the little trail that you see up on the north is access to the house back behind it. So they just kind of have meandered through that old part of the New Walla plat. If there's any other questions, love to answer them.
Commissioner Privet, it's your day today.
Right, it is my day. The only thing I didn't like about it was the septic system. But it seems to be far enough away from residences, and the only thing that concerned me is for the owner of that property, but I assume it's big enough for, for that, but.
Well, you can at least see it mentioned in that plan.
This is what's anticipated for the septic system for that facility.
Yeah, and there's nothing outdoor that will be taking place or anything, right?
No, sir.
Right, okay.
It's primarily, I think, if I recall, batting cages, it'll be pitching and weight rooms and things like that. I think it's more singular, not singular again, four, but it's primarily designed around baseball, I think.
Is there any idea where the fire protection tank would be located with the contours that you're dealing with?
We hadn't really actually looked at that very, the main thing we needed to do is take care of the zoning up front.
Okay. But you might share for the commissioners who had not heard about the requirement regarding needing that storage tank, just in case.
Do what?
Share that there has to be a storage tank in order to meet the code.
Okay.
So, just so everyone knows, because it's not served by water or sewer. But we can say that the New Walla Fire Department is across the street for what that's worth.
I was going to say, we have a fire department right across the street from us right now. Hopefully, that'll help.
Well, you don't need that.
Yes, they're very close.
Other questions, commissioners?
I did have a question. Seemed like the parking was kind of limited. What did you say the uses were?
It's primarily, it's a sports recreational for youth. I think it's tied closely more so to baseball, little batting cages, weight rooms, pitching, you know, little interior stuff such as that.
Okay, but no team sports or spectators?
Anything associated?
No, no, it's only, just a.
Not, not volleyball? No, it doesn't have soccer or foosball courts and all that kind of stuff in there, no, sir. No competition facilities, no, sir.
Right.
That definitely will, yeah, that makes a huge difference if it was.
Yeah, I was going to say, we don't have enough parking for that kind of environment. No way.
That's a good question. Other questions, commissioners? Well, Commissioner Privet?
I'll move to recommend approval. What are we on now? P or SPOD 1558?
Commissioner Privet moves to recommend approval of SPOD 1558 to City Council. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Newman. Please cast your votes. I think it passed. There we go. And the motion passes. We're in line for.
Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you. We're in line for item 10.
This is PUD 1968, application to rezone 12518 North Pennsylvania Avenue from PUD 712 and C3.
Good afternoon. Caitlin Turner, 522 Cold Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant who is also here with me. This is the applicant, or this is an application to rezone. The property is on Penn, near 122nd and near that Penn entrance to Chisholm Creek, is for a multifamily development. We do have that commercial along the frontage on Penn, as well as floodplain to the east that kind of wraps around south. We have some buffers from a major arterial and then also from any development in the east, which is great. There are apartments across from Penn, as well as about a half mile into Chisholm Creek. There's a couple apartments that, I think one is almost finished being developed, and one is on the way. We do have a clean and favorable staff report, no TEs, so naturally, I'd like to add two. The first one being to Section 9.4, we would like to, I'll just read the sentence in its entirety, that might be easier. No less than a six-foot and no greater than an eight-foot high wall shall be required along the boundary of this parcel, period. Said wall shall be constructed entirely of decorative metal, fence or iron, comma, and then stucco, brick, the remainder of that sentence. And we would also like to include that chain link fencing shall be prohibited, just to clarify with that addition to the metal. I would also like to add a small revision to Section 9.7 regarding dumpster regulations, so that dumpsters shall be located within a building or within an area screened by fence or masonry wall of sufficient height, and then the remainder of that sentence. So that will allow, rather than having those sporadic dumpster enclosures near the outside of the, or the exterior of the property or throughout the parking lot, they'll actually be able to have trash chutes and then rollaway dumpsters, which I've lived in apartment complexes with this exact same structure, and it's, it's pretty nice as a tenant, I will say that from personal experience. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have, and we ask that you recommend approval.
Thank you. This is in my ward. I have met with the applicant. This is pretty consistent with the development that's happening in the area. I do think it's a great opportunity for us to continue to build more multifamily in our great city, and so I'm, I'm in support, especially with the changes that were made with the additional TEs. So I don't have any, any other questions. Other questions, commissioners?
I did want to just make a comment or two, if I could. We are very often presented with developments that are pitched, for lack of a better term, to us as affordable housing or workforce housing, or in some way, in terms of their core demographic, you know, they're looking to fill what we, in Oklahoma City, are told repeatedly, we don't have enough of. And that's great, but when it gets right down to it, I'm, I don't believe, and maybe legal would correct me if I'm wrong about this, that we have the ability to require that or write it into the zoning in any way that's enforceable, so that, on the one hand, it's offered as a reason for us to approve something, not necessarily this particular project. I, I don't mean to, to cast dispersions on it in any way, shape, or form, but it's something that while it's being offered to us as a reason for approval, it's not really something that we have any control over. At the end of the day, what we're approving is multifamily housing, and I think it's important for us to keep that in mind as we're looking at these types of projects and deciding whether the land use is right for that particular piece of ground.
I think that that makes sense, Commissioner Powers, and, but I think the, the key challenge is the term affordable housing has different meanings depending on who you're talking to. And so maybe one of the opportunities we have is to have more clarity about exactly how we would define that. For some people, that just means the price tag. For others, that means that you limit the, the types of people and the incomes of those people who are able to purchase or, or even rent into that. So I, I just think we need to be clear about what that means and be clear about what the benefits are, and so that's just yet another opportunity. Maybe it's another study session opportunity, because they don't have enough chances to do that enough, but I know it's a lot of work for staff, that's why I'm joking about it, but I, and so it's always greatly appreciated. But I, I think it's worthy of us having a better discussion so that, and not accusing Caitlin of doing that, this today, but it does happen to us regularly that people come in and say, well, we have to do this, I mean, this is affordable housing. What does that actually mean? And do we have any enforcement capability of that? Sounds like not really. Thoughts?
Well, first of all, we, we're happy to provide whatever information we can. We are, we, well, recently, the city did a study, affordable housing study. We're doing an affordable housing implementation plan, and yes, you're, you're absolutely right, affordable housing mean different, means different things to different people, but to the city, it does have a defined meaning, and we have, you know, the, the different levels of affordability, 60, 80% or, you know, 30% of area median income that we would be targeting. So when the city offers incentives, for example, for affordable housing, they're tied to a term, 20 years, for example, and they're also tied to those affordability levels. So, you know, if, if somebody is asking for city money, often affordable housing comes up and those discussions are had. So we can certainly provide all the information that, that's needed, and you're right, we don't typically associate zoning with, with affordable housing, but that's probably a topic for a study session, if you want to talk about inclusionary zoning and, and things of that nature. It's been done elsewhere. There are different ways to do affordable housing. Most often, it is through, or through funding, whether it be federal or local funds. Sometimes it's tied to a regulatory process, but even in those cases, it nearly always comes with government funds that are subsidizing that.
So it's.
Am I correct in my belief that most of that happens after the zoning takes place? I mean, it, one of the things they need to be able to show when they go to apply for that kind of stuff is if they have the zoning they need.
Yes.
So, yeah, I, I'm very curious about this and whether there is a place for us in that process, and if so, you know, how we would justify it legally in terms of, you know, ordinance or state law or whatever it would take. I mean, I just don't know enough about it and would very much like to know more.
But if that, if, but, but that's another important point. If the determination of whether it meets those city, those ordinance requirements or the plans requirements for definition for affordable housing, then it sounds like it's not even our place to evaluate that at this level, that we just need to say, it's housing, you know? Yeah. But then I'd worry about the concentration, and that was what you and I were talking about before, of, you know, that's also important, an important factor for us, is the concentration of affordable housing being in one set area, and the impact on development potentially and the, that that can cause. So maybe it is worth the study session for us to talk about it, but, yeah, it's interesting.
It's certainly something I would like to know more about.
Agreed. Sorry, Caitlin.
Oh, no, no worries.
Like, long, long for the ride on this one. Okay, are there any further questions, commissioners? I cannot make the motion to approve, but I would if I could.
One question on screening is, with relation to the adjacency to residential uses, which is noted in the passage, is there, can you tell us about the plans for screening? I mean, I'm, I guess my question for the other commissioner's sake is, should we be requiring the decorative metal fencing on the entire, you know, where it's adjacent? Because a lot of the sites adjacent to O2 and C3, and it seems appropriate to have that separation of the, the living component from those other uses.
Yes, agreed. So we did, whenever I was reading that TE, the period after parcel, so we're just eliminating the piece that says where it is adjacent to residential use. So it will be required along the boundary, the entire boundary of the parcel.
I think that's a good clarification. Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Before we vote, Caitlin, could you, one more time for the record, read the recommended technical evaluations, please?
Yes. I'll just go ahead and read the entire, both sections.
Great.
So for 9.4, no less than a six and no greater than an eight-foot high wall shall be required along the boundary of this parcel, period. Said wall shall be constructed entirely of decorative metal or iron, stucco, brick, or stone on a continuous footing, or may be constructed of wood with brick columns with footings on 20-foot centers, and shall be solid and opaque. Chain link fencing shall be prohibited. The next one is 9.7, that first sentence, or first section of that one. Dumpsters shall be located within a building or within an area screened by a fence or masonry wall of sufficient height that screens the dumpster from public streets and residences, and shall be placed no closer than 50 feet from all property lines adjacent to residential zoning use. And then we'll go ahead and just keep that trash collection facility, no amendment to that second paragraph under that section.
Ms. Turner?
Yes?
Is it your client's practice to put? Is it your client's practice to put dumpsters within buildings?
Yes, I believe so. That is their model.
That's new for me. I've not seen this.
It's interesting. I hadn't heard of it either till you just said that, with the chutes.
So what we had experienced is if you're on a floor above the first floor, then there's trash chute, so you're not having to walk your trash down as a tenant every time you need to take your trash out. Put in the chute, it goes to kind of an isolated, often we had to use like a key or fob to get into a trash room, and then that gets rolled away every week. So just kind of less work for the people that live there that need to take their trash out. And I will, Sarah made an excellent point on that screening piece of it, so with that language to be required around the entire boundary, that would require screening all along Pennsylvania Avenue. I don't know if that is necessarily...
So except along the western boundary?
We would want a three north, again.
I think the way it's drafted now is that it would be a wall, along Penn. And I want to just want to clarify if they are up for, are you asking for a fence or a wall? Along Penn.
Gotcha.
Okay, so I will go ahead and, let's revise that then one more time. I do apologize, just so that section 9.4, that's starting on the second sentence, would be said, well, should I say, said wall or fence shall be constructed? Just to eliminate that confusion. I mean, I know that the decorative iron and metal, so I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You could use language such as to the east and south of the...
That still counts.
Would, yeah, would the distinction between a wall or a fence, if we have the decorative metal or iron language?
Yeah, because it's, it's designed to be see-through, right?
Right.
Okay.
It does say solid and opaque, which would mean see-through, right?
Opaque would not be see-through. But I think we're allowed, the wording that you've suggested would allow some flexibility to be either open decorative metal, iron-style gating, or fencing, that would be opaque. So do we want to be more specific on where it can be opaque, where it can be see-through? That's a good question.
So let, we'll go ahead and put, no less than a six-foot and no greater than an eight-foot-high fence or wall shall be required along the boundary of the, of this parcel. Said wall shall be constructed entirely of a decorative metal or iron fence, comma, stucco, brick, et cetera, for the remainder of the sentence. Does that clear up?
Fence or wall.
Fence or wall in both sentences.
As long as you guys don't care whether it's opaque or... Do we care whether it's opaque? I'm, I would prefer for it to be see-through, it would...
Yeah, I think the simple thing to just add and provide in Pennsylvania will be...
A wall to be a see-through fence.
Visually permeable, I mean, you know...
Right.
Good attorney language. I like that. Okay, so just for clarity, sorry. One more time.
Okay. I'm going to be like saying this in my head for the rest of the day. Okay, no less than a six and no greater than an eight-foot-high fence or wall shall be required along the boundary of this parcel. Said fence or wall shall be constructed entirely of decorative metal or iron, stucco, brick, or stone on a continuous footing, or may be constructed of wood with brick columns with footings on twenty-foot centers, and shall be solid and opaque. Good? No?
No. I think we need to lose the "and solid and opaque".
Okay, so we are going to put a period after twenty-foot centers.
There we go. Okay.
And I'm making note of this, I can get revisions to you guys, but...
Okay. So, I think the motion, for whoever's brave enough, is to, is to potentially recommend approval of this application, subject to the two technical evaluations as read into the record regarding screening and dumpsters. Commissioner Powers has moved to recommend approval of PUD 1968 City Council, subject to the two technical evaluations as read into the record. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're in line for item 11.
Item 11 is case PC 10902, application to rezone 1021 North Gardner Avenue from R4 and C3 to C3 Community Commercial.
Hello, I am Michael Dunn with Hunter's Landing Realty, and the request is to rezone the R4 to C3. The primary reason for this is the lack of sewer lines available to that property. The nearest sewer line is across streets, across multiple properties, and our ability to develop that land for R4 purposes is incredibly difficult without access to sewer line, and the required septic system to feed an R4-type development is also such that it doesn't all fit in the same lot. So trying to find a good use of a vacant lot to help the community, help the area, and provide service.
Commissioner Meek, this is in your ward.
Yes, and I spoke with the applicant, and I, I don't see a problem with this. It has been cleaned up. It looks a lot better than what it does in the attached images. I believe that the plan to advance the area and, and better everything around it, hopefully, is at the heart of the applicant's interest, so unless anyone has anything else...
Just to be clear, do you own the, the property to the south of this?
No.
You do not? Okay, I think we had that understanding, that...
Yes. I own the property to the west.
Okay.
Property to the south is not mine. I have no relation to the property to the south, the property to the north.
You don't own the north either?
North, no. To the west. There is a C4 lot that is immediately to the west.
Right.
Has thirteen commercial buildings on it, and those are mostly rented at this point.
So with the C3, what's the, what's the buffer that's created, that's mandated by ordinance with R1?
And a fifteen-foot setback and a five-foot landscape buffer.
You said fifteen-foot...
Setback.
Setback.
And a restriction in building height.
Okay.
And we did speak about that, and you didn't have a problem with that, correct?
Correct.
The thing for me, and typically you would see me object in these situations, but what's R4? What would be the buffer with R4? You'd be in similar, you'd be in a similar situation either way with the existing zoning.
Right.
So, thoughts?
It is a lot of uses.
Well, and, and the reason for the rezone is, is noted as there's no sewer on the site, so how does going from R4 slash C3 to just C3 improve the situation of not having, it's not going to create a sewer, is it?
No, but it opens up the option for septic, so if I, if I'm trying to install a septic system for a twenty-unit apartment building, that is effectively a half-acre or larger...
Yeah, I, I understand, understand. Where is the sewer? I mean, is it on 10th?
The sewer, if you, the sewer is on the north side of 10th. There is also a sewer, and I can't reach it to point, but you cross Gardner, which is on the, the street to the east of me is Gardner. There is a, the apartment building that was there has been torn down. You cross that property, you have the large apartment complex where your cursor is now. The sewer is on that property. I've attempted multiple times to reach out to the lot owner for what used to be the, the apartment building just east of Gardner, and I've been completely unsuccessful getting ahold of them, certified letters, and knock on doors, and try not to be that guy who's stalking you while also trying to get ahold of you.
Yeah, I, I, it's, I understand your, your conundrum. It's unfortunate, because ideally, we get, you have services to that site. It's a pretty densely developed area. It surprises me that it's not possible to...
Isn't there sewer straight west, too? Straight west of there, I think there's a sewer.
The church, so you see the thirteen commercial properties there, then to the west is a church. That church has a large septic system on the south side of their property. Again, I've tried to reach out to them multiple times to, I don't know what the requirements or regulations are to me trying to tie into them. Again, I've been unsuccessful. I don't know how far west I have to go, but I know from speaking with the, the department that is over the sewer lines, when I had those conversations a year, year and a half ago, there was nothing readily accessible.
And you don't have sewer on your property immediately to the west, then?
Do not. We actually have a porta potty.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it's a que, it's a question of encroachment into this neighborhood on, I'm sorry, I've already got, Gardner, with these, with a more intense use of C3. Thoughts? Commissioner Noble?
Yeah, it's just a lot of uses and, I don't know, I mean, no sewer, that's, that's just...
Seems like we would need the ability to be a little bit more careful about how the site is laid out if you're going to have to have sewer. Have you talked to staff at all about the possibility of doing a SPOD for this? Are you familiar with that process?
I am familiar. It was something that was discussed.
I explained it to him.
Yes. Hesitant, because it's, I realize how much that can limit the use of the property, and at the end of the day, if we're going to do some type of build for a specific use for a specific person, then it's hard to fully go in and say, "Okay, set this criteria", when that may eliminate the development opportunity.
Something that, yeah.
Just for clarification's sake, the property is to the west, those thirteen buildings, that's zoned C4. The property to the north is zoned C3. One of these lots has already zoned C3, it's just kind of bumped in here, because I wasn't positive it was part of that C3 or R4, as you go across northwest 10th Street. So it's not atypical for the area. It fits with what's around, it's just rezoning this specific lot.
I think the concern for us, and unfortunately, you're speaking to a commission that did have a study session about the impact of septic systems, so there is significant concern among this group generally about the spray fields that get created and the impact that it has on neighboring properties. And since you are, you know, right next to residential properties, we're concerned about the ability to protect those neighbors from any of a more harmful use that you might decide to, to use. Like, you might put a gas station there, and I'd, I'd hate to be the neighbor that's to the south of you if that were to be the case with this C3 development. Dustin, did you have something to add?
Yeah, Dustin Segger, utilities department. I was trying to get my map just come up to be able to show the location of the sewer. There is a six-inch line just to the east by that apartment complex. So that, the big structure to the east there, it, there's a, go more east, right there, there's a six-inch sewer line right there.
Okay.
On the property of the apartment complex.
Yeah.
So effectively, I've got a street, a property, and then effectively a second property.
Right, in order for him to be able to connect to it, then he would have to pay to be able to make those improvements to extend the public main across the street adjacent to his property to be able to connect to it. And I haven't checked the elevations or anything to see if it's even possible, so that could be, it could be not possible by gravity. Another option is to be able to do a private lift station and be able to pump it there if, if septic isn't, you know, that's an option. But that's on the developer's choice whether he wants septic or a pump station.
The, the property to the north is on septic, and I know that just from speaking with them. The property to the south, given that there's no sewer line near me, I presume they're also on septic.
Highly likely.
Mr. Chair, and when you mentioned concern about the neighbors, just the one to the south, or is it also potentially affected the neighbors to the east? Is that...
I believe that that's an apartment complex that was torn down. So it's already multifamily. It's already zoned R4.
Okay. The neighbors to the south, I've seen that, and it's a lot of trash, and maybe on septic. I mean, I get trying to protect neighbors, they're not here, and they're not taking care of their place. Not as sensitive to the septic in this location.
Fair enough.
If, it helps provide context, I have printed off multiple copies of photos. I don't want to crowd the conversation, but I do have handouts, if that's allowed.
They are allowed.
Okay.
You're the first person to probably to be shy about it. Most people are like so anxious to get up here and like hand it to them.
This is a tough one, just because it's, it's a hot topic. In my personal view, is in the larger scheme of things, I mean, this is a relatively smaller site, so I can probably get around the fact that he's, he's, he's tried to find solutions with adjacent properties and hasn't been able to, and so, so, you know, we can find a way to help him develop this property.
That's what we spoke about. This is, it's a microscopic site for, but a larger issue that we're dealing with. When I got there and saw the improvements from what, like I said, from what I saw on Google Earth, when I first pulled it up, it looks, already looks way better. I did have a question. You do own the properties to the west, the, the commercial buildings?
Yes.
So, I see eleven buildings, and you said none of those have sewer, correct?
Yes, correct.
And, and they were all permitted?
I, from when I purchased it, there was nothing that hit the radar from when I purchased it, so I presume I didn't build any of them.
All right, so they are all separate businesses that you lease out the building to different tenants?
Renters, yes.
Okay. None of them with facilities?
The way we address that property is with a porta potty that's, of course, serviced frequently.
Okay.
The intent upon purchasing that property was also to get it connected to sewer, and that is a lesson learned on my part, a little more due diligence sometimes.
And all the cars that you said, when we were talking, you said they had, they had belonged to the previous tenant, it was in one of the, one of your commercial buildings, and they had just kind of spilled over there, right?
They were a combination of many of the tenants.
Right.
And as we started to prioritize getting things cleaned up, started getting some complaints from the neighbors, the last thing we're trying to do is burden the community, and so started taking, to their severe unhappiness, but we got it all moved out.
Thoughts?
Commissioner?
You know, I, I frankly hate to see commercial brought this far off of 10th. It's a little bit different when you're developing a site as a whole, to do it piecemeal and take it this far off of 10th. But I have to agree with Commissioner La Forge in the sense that when you go down there and look at what's actually there, the idea of somebody who's willing to come in and clean it up, and invest in, in bringing something new into the area, yeah, I think, it's, it's a kind of a close call for me. I would rather see it at SPOD, or something that would limit some, that would limit some of the uses that would be available, but, you know, I, I don't know that I'm mad enough about it to vote no.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I was just looking at the, the data in our GIS system, and looking at that. The information says it's about seven feet deep, that manhole, and so it's about 200 feet away, so it is possible to be able to extend it just preliminary numbers off of it, so it is, it can work, but the developer would have to pay for those improvements.
There's hope, it sounds like, for sewer. I think I'm, I feel similarly about when it's appropriate to encroach that, that far south. From the R4 across the street, the R, the C4 to the west, you know, it's all very similar.
Yeah, the C4 is almost parallel with the back of this.
Just curious about the O1, how's that getting there?
Yeah, and why? That's very odd. Other thoughts, commissioners?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, sympathetic to this particular case. I, I just think it's, I don't like propagating the septic systems more, particularly when it comes to commercial with unknown and quite a few uses. Some of these, you know, most of these would be not a big deal, but there's certain ones, like, I mean, even just eating establishments, you know, sit-down, automotive and equipment, cleaning and repairs, you know, those are the kind of things that really shouldn't be happening on a site that you don't have connections to sewer, you know?
Laundry.
And laundry, yeah, you know, you're not, you're not going to do a laundromat on a septic system, you know, I mean, it, you just can't really do that, so...
Are there other limits by code that prevent that?
I want to support the application, but is there anything we can do to help mitigate? But we can't with the C, straight C3 is the thing, yeah.
Does the code have anything that would prevent... Does the code have anything that would prevent that? Because those are all good. Those are, like environmentally, are there any laws or anything that would, would prevent those uses without sewer?
He would have to go to DEQ and to be able to apply for the permit there, and to be able to see, they would have to size it accordingly for their use and everything like that. And some of those uses, just the volume of water and everything, the septic system would be huge to be able to do that, so it may not be a possibility, but that's all regulated through DEQ. So the reason why normally what we did is, we normally require extension of utilities where they can be possible. However, we changed the distance. It used to be 750 feet. We, we, we found that that to be a little bit too far and a little bit too cost prohibitive for single lot developments and things like that, rather they be commercial, residential. And so this falls, and so we changed that distance to be, you know, 100 feet if it's a single lot, and then if you're gonna do a lot split where there's two lots, is we changed it to 200 feet, to make it more reasonable and to be able to have those developers be able to pay for that if it's a single home development or things like that. And since this fell outside that distance of 100 foot, that's the reason why I didn't require, I mean, a utility extension main for the development. If this was, you know, a year ago, then it would be 750 feet. So in order for them to develop anything, we would require them to extend the sewer, or we wouldn't issue a water meter, so.
May I address a question to you? Is that allowed?
Mm-hmm.
It is my understanding that I cannot force an adjacent property owner to allow me access to their property to reach.
That, that is true. And, and since, and that's where we always have that, that caveat is if it's readily available. And so he would have to get a property owner for an easement for that, for that sanitary sewer, and if that property owner is unreasonable, it would not allow that, then we cannot force him. And so that would be a reason why we would allow a septic system there. If it was a benefit to the city, meaning that if we had a, like a big interceptor or a big main planned to go there in the future, that's where the city would be involved and be able to help obtain that easement, because then it's part of the master plan to be able to do that. But in this case, then we, this case, we would not be helping getting that easement, because it's just pertaining to one development.
But there's two properties I have to go either through or into in this instance.
It's a challenge, potentially. Also, I have concerns about relying on the Department of Environmental Quality to enforce these regulations, especially after what we learned about septic systems. But we didn't look, we didn't talk about it in a commercial context.
Right.
We talked about it in a residential context.
He would, they, in order to put a commercial use, almost any use on there, would have to have either sanitary from the city or something through DEQ. Even many storage is required to have the restrooms.
Well, that, that, I agree with that statement, but that's my question on his, the other property that he owns to the west. He has all of these buildings with no, with no services.
I suspect that there was no permit either.
Yeah, that's not, that's not allowed. I mean, you're supposed to have accessible, accessible route and ability to use the restroom there.
If I had to guess, I would say, I'm, I'm trying to, you can help me out with this. I'm trying to find a better word to use than grandfather.
Grandfather.
But, um, because I don't like that term. But, yeah, you know, my guess is C4, we don't give out C4 zoning. Nobody's gotten any C4 zoning in the last 25 years at least, so, um, you know, this, that's been an existing condition for a while, I'm guessing.
That would make sense.
Right.
Okay, y'all.
Well, I, I, I mean, I think that the, by nature of the size of the site, the, the uses are gonna naturally, a number of those are just gonna probably be off the table for, for development.
Yeah.
So that, that gives me some comfort.
Car wash.
It's gonna be pretty low intensity, but, yeah.
And if you do get a building permit today,
Yes.
you will have to have sewer of some sort, and you have to go through DEQ and get it properly sized.
Absolutely.
Right.
Thoughts, Commissioner Noble?
Yeah, and I agree. I would think the time of permitting is gonna dictate it. I just don't, we don't normally allow C3 right next to residential, and it's zoned residential.
And I thought you'd tell me that was, that the residential was your, your property
No, I'm sorry.
To the south.
It is, although to the south is not me. There's a large fence there. To the north is C3, but it's actually a home.
Okay, that's what it was.
Yeah, but I don't own either of those.
It is a home, but it's C3.
Okay.
Yeah. I think it's time to just, to just decide where we are. So who wants to go first in making which motion? Do we either, you know, for approving as is or asking him for a spud? Do you have a preference? If we were to vote to ask you to go back and do a, take a continuance, go back and work with staff on a spud, do you have an objection to that?
If I request a vote for approval of C3 and it does not pass,
It does not.
am I starting over? Or do I still get the spud option?
No, you'd still go to City Council with that recommend, with, we, I guess if the motion to approve was, went down, then we'd still have to make another motion for a recommendation to City Council, or a motion to grant a continuance to go back and work on an SPUD. So yes, you'd still have an opportunity to, if we voted on that motion in particular, you would still gain the opportunity to decide what you wanted to do next.
My preference is a little bit intentional to leave it a little bit more broad on the last page of the handout I provided. You've got professional offices, you've got daycare facilities. There's, there's certainly some, some good uses that we can do a build-to-suit and help bring activity to the area and commerce to the area. So my first preference is to try to get the more broad, just so I can have more options to build a suit.
And it might, it could be that with, through an SPUD, though, we decide that we might not necessarily limit the uses. It could also be that we just build in more protections for the residential to the south, too. That's another option we'd have through an SPUD that we don't currently have in this application for just straight C3 zoning. But I think we should probably just see where we are. So if someone wants to be first in making the motion, let's just see.
I'm gonna move to recommend approval to council for PC 10902.
Commissioner Meek moves to recommend approval of PC 10902 to City Council. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes.
He needs suspenseful music.
And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Appreciate it. Have a safe day.
You know, that's like, I feel like this case is one of those, you got, it was a light docket, so we probably spent more time on it than we would've. But, so unfortunate for you, but appreciate your patience.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. We are, we have reached the end of items requiring separate vote. Are there any additional items? Are there any, now, let's move on to communications and reports. Any reports from planning commission committees? Seeing none, are there any planning commission members? Commissioner Powers, anything? Commissioner Meek? Commissioner Privet? Commissioner Newman? Commissioner Govine?
No.
Commissioner Noble? Commissioner La Forge, you look great. Love, love the tie and everything for us. Love that. You dressed up for us? I like it. Are we all invited? All right. Planning Department?
Nothing from us.
Municipal Counselor's Office?
No, sir.
Okay, no report. Citizens to be heard. Mr. Warrior? Nothing for us today. Okay. Well, seeing as we've reached the end of our agenda, we are now adjourned at a record 228, shortest meeting I've ever had.